Right. So, pretty much for that, definitely. It's not like anything else with the model. Please.
Okay. I also talked to, I talked to Gary Stanley.
Can you tell him that?
Yeah, okay. He should be. Because it's not as sure as I was, this is bad. But we talk with him more because it's, well, we can publish this very early on. It's been that way. It's, 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 yeah. I'll make that actually work out. Like that, just like, and then, right now, keep the body. And we don't even know if the property owner, which is, um, or company, um, well, they've been doing their, uh, for years. You know, they can't, they can't, they can't go over this, 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 this. Oh, no. The way that I'm, 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 I'm saying, do you even know? Right. How, how do they react to stuff that's a little more? Well, I'm sorry, I'm, 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 I'm,
The city, so they're familiar with the requirements. And you know, I do have to suspect that some of the regulations have encouraged an underground type of work where we are getting some of the work without permits. And of course, we're not seeing that outright. So I don't know how many of those are or if it really is the case, but it certainly one of my concerns. The other thing is if they wanted to get a permit, we would still honor that request and issue the permit at the same thesis, you know, though we weren't, we, you know, as permit requirements. That's an option as well. Someone did want a piece of mine then to say, I want reassurance that this concrete building is going to meet code. We'll still do that, whether it's just not required under ordinance, if, if the proposed language was adopted.
So will this put us in line with other communities then?
As far as closer line, it seems most of the communities in the area have no oversight on the concrete, is what I found. I did call around to, I believe all of the adjoining neighborhoods and communities, communities rather than neighborhoods, but in it seem there wasn't any oversight that I found for someone.
And there's always room to make changes as we go forward. What we're trying to do is first make it the best we can possibly have for the community member share across everything. And if there's issues, that's what we're here for, make the changes. And just where do we want to go from here? Do we?
Well, we would like to move forward. Be our recommendation administratively that we need to move forward on that. Particularly in cement work, it might not be the same, Dr., but with cement that Dominic had mentioned, there's coordination with schedules. You're only bored at certain time if we're having to give an inspection. And before that, this is what we're seeing a level of frustration over the years is that the window is so tight on that and other communities aren't doing it, as you've heard Marty saying, then that just goes up to frustration with this community even more.
Okay, so do we all agree to put it on?
I agree.
Okay, I agree. Thank you, Mark. Moving on, moving on financing property. Chair, where?
Okay, we have a few ideas under my committee. So the first is a doubt, our distribution of the Stark County allocations of the local government funds, which will expire at the end of 2019. And SCOD, which is Stark County of Government Members, met in April and talked about this. And there are two ways that they typically determine the formulation, which is a statutory which we haven't used, and then an alternative formula they've used since really 1990 in 10-year increments. The thing that was different about this year is we're currently involved in the census, better? Okay. Currently involved in doing a census for our community. And then a little bit about the valuation for taxes 2018, collected in 2019. And at this point, we have still have some people who are looking at those reappraisals and who have come before the county board, looking at disputes. So what was recommended at this meeting in April of 2019 was that we do a three-year extension on this. And the SCOD board voted and said that they would hope that all of our councils would typically vote in favor of us. So that's what I'm proposing. And Laura, do you have any thoughts, concerns?
I don't. It seems pretty reasonable to run something up with a census, so get the population data rather than being off from that every 10 years.
Yeah, they said from now on going forward, that's what they were going to do. So, okay. If there are any other questions, we'll move forward with that. Be good with that. And then the next one, so B, and we're been soft raising the mayor of the city with the Board of Control of the agreement between Auditor State and Perry and Associates. And I believe this is something we do every single year. And so, were there any concerns or questions?
Sure. This is something that the Auditor State has jurisdiction over the annual financial audit. And if the Auditor's office doesn't do the audit, they can bid that out to independent public auditor. So that's what they've done in the past. For the past five years, we've had Perry and Associates perform our annual audit, and they can get up to a five-year extension on that contract. And the Auditor State wishes to do that with Perry as long as the city's in agreement. So they've fixed the contract. They actually kept our pricing the same for the next five years as we've had for the past five years, which is pretty good considering you think a 10-year period, the cost isn't going up, going up. So that's, that's all. And this would be for our 2019 through 2023 audits. And like I said, the Auditor State is responsible for bidding these out, but in speaking with the law director, because this is over $50,000 for the term of the contract, he recommended that we get council of the loan board.
Okay. Yep. Darrell?
What is the annual cost for Perry?
It is, the bid price is $28,400.
And if the state were to do it with its team, what will cost?
The last time the state did it, which was six years ago, it was a little higher than that. It was in the 130s. It also fluctuates slightly based if you have a federal simple audit, if you spend enough in federal dollars. And we had had that in some last years.
Are there any marked differences in technique between Perry and state auditors?
I think every audit team has different techniques that they use. What you see with an independent auditor is they spend less time on site and more time back in the office. They run a lot more analytic procedures based on reports that we give them versus pulling individual transactions sitting on it already. And it's just an efficiency and just kind of methodology standpoint that they do. They're all held to the same auditing standards, though they have to find a way to meet those in a, method they choose.
Is there any wisdom in having the state do an audit once we have a private contractor to go and circle back and then the state come back in? Is there any action out for that?
Well, the state has a role that you can only be out with the independent front for 10 years, and then you have to go back to the state for at least one year. So at the end of the
So does that mean that there is a value in having the state auditors?
They do have a self, because again, they do hold the power over those audits, so they like to get them back in at least once every 10 years.
Really, it's kind of up to us to decide whether we think it's prudent to have the state in something shorter or tentative, so.
Well, you can ask the state to come in, you know, rather than using them, but it is up to the state. You don't make the choice. Ultimately, they say it's going to be bid option independent based on their workload.
Okay. Since it's really not our choice, go ahead. Okay.
Excuse me just a moment, that is important, that means not.
Not yet. No, they, they have the contract authority, they do have all of that. And just to kind of settle with our procedure, I know we've been kind of going around and kind of saying yes, well, we're moving something through the agenda since we don't have committee reports any longer, and I don't know that we did that on the, you know, way.
Do you think it all in favor?
Not necessarily that, but just, you know, we kind of bond, take it past our way.
What we need to do for the transcription is to note that we need to note two things. Number one is we need to know each individual from the administration who's present in the administrative team, giving the, just like we would for completing the form. Second is that we should indicate that we do have votes on any particular item to move forward because we're authorizing legislation. So we need to have some expression of authorization.
Might be easier for the chair to ask anyone is opposed to moving forward.
Do you want me to go back to A?
Just to be safe.
Okay. So when we were talking about under financing property, order under A, an agreement with the Stark County Local Government Funds, were there any issues about moving forward? Okay, no issues, we'll move forward. Under ordinance or under B, an agreement between Order Control, Two Hundred and Twenty Professional Services, the Auditor State, and Perry and Associates, were there any concerns or issues to not move forward? Okay, again, we'll move forward. And C is appropriation for $121,000 on East Hill. And we have already, let's see, we've already, the total funded for the project is $203,000. $82,000 has already been appropriated, and we're requesting another $121 to keep the payment, so that East Hill can be done. Rob, any, any issues or concerns?
None whatsoever. Very good news. We had applied for municipal funds for East Hill, and typically we're awarded $75,000, depends. This year, they gave us $203,000.
Wow. That's great. Well, that's great news. Okay, any questions or concerns that would move forward? All right, they move forward.
Thank you. And before we get started, we're going to throw this thanks to Chairman Revolt, just to your point earlier. Everyone here from management or from administrative team is present.
Yes.
Member Revolt?
Okay, two ideas for consideration. First is the annual adoption of replacement for our codified ordinances. And maybe before we move on, before I go to Laura, these changes reflect changes on state code, which are incorporated in our codified ordinances, and then also our changes that we have made in our own ordinances as well that are codified. One of the questions that always comes up is what's the technique involved in making sure that we've got everything? And Laura and I believe we've swept everything in. Laura, would you describe the process your team went through to prepare this for me?
Sure. At the conclusion of our July 8th meeting, we went back and made a list of all the ordinances that had gone through council the past year, because the last time we sent these to codified those last July, July 18th. So we created a list of all ordinances and then went through and identified those that impact the codified ordinances. Some things do not, such as budget, a contract, a purchase, but some things do. So once we had our list, then we ran that past the law director to get another set of eyes on it, and then sent that up to the drain company, helps us with this process. Went back and forth with him, did all the language up to him. Once we received the printed copies, I had our intern, Ben Niss, go through, and you can see he placed all of the tabs in here and as he verified to each signed ordinance what was in there. Once he did that, I had him check his work, and so we had two sets of eyes go through this. Just at the end of last week, Drain also got this onto the website. So today, we started going through and verifying that all the language on the website matches this, it matches the signed legislation, and we have one more left to go, but everything looked good so far.
Are there any questions?
You want to hear, want to note, if I could, there were also a few ordinances from past years, from before the July 18th to July 19th period, that the law director had found didn't get included in prior years, and so we sent those up to the legislature, and those have been incorporated.
Does counsel have any, any questions or comment? Is there anyone who is opposed to moving forward with this legislation? Okay, we'll have it on the agenda for next Monday. Item two is to that point, changing our codified ordinances. Our current codified words states that we'll be meeting North Main City Hall, we are the citizen. So item B is amendment that reflects the place of our meeting, and it changed the citizen. And I might note that I think you and your team have done a nice job getting it. And second to that. If there are, if there are no objections, I'd like to have this placed on the agenda for the next week.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, street and alley, Chair Fontaine.
Yes, this is the annual bridge inspection program that ODOT is actually paying 100% for. And the two bridges in question, they want to peek at, is East Hill and Westwood. And, you know, just like for the next couple, I think it's been for like three years, I think.
Yes, correct.
And engineer grant, kind of any other questions you may have. But I'd say it sounds pretty good, it's not an emergency, and we should put it on the agenda if there's no objection.
Okay, no objection. Okay. Seeing no objection, we will move on to our supervisor, Chairman Surratt.
Okay, I'll definitely bring Rob in on this, but this is one that we're, it's like we're submitting application to get a grant for the 10th Street Northeast Sanitary Sewer replacement project. Rob, what's that all about?
Yes, in working with the street commissioner, we finally have some issues with the sanitary sewer on 10th Street Northeast from basically the high school driveway where it becomes a private system, west 1800 feet to North Main Street. And we've got various dips and dews and valleys and not terrible yet, but it's something we need to address. And while we, the sanitary sewer system was right down the center of the road, so we figured once we did that, as you recall, 10th Street's in pretty poor condition as well, one entire, so I'm trying to do, we do the curb and gutters, the street catch basins are still the old style, we have pre cast, and also complete reconstruction of the pavement. So we thought that was a good candidate to submit to a public works commission for a grant package. We've got this roughly million dollar project, quite significant project, so we could really use the assistance. And having this, those applications are due Friday, September 13th. Having decided if I want to go 50/50 route for a little better scoring, or do like East Hill, 75/25.
You've got a cool home at it.
Yeah, whatever you, maybe 75/25, and if we have to wait a year, it's
Throw it out.
Yeah.
So that's what I, all this is, is just allowing me to submit that application. Questions, anyone?
Rob, do we get, I'm going to assess, prefer status if there's a bus route? I mean, that is a major route into the school with that.
I don't know that we get preferred status, but it's something that I would definitely have in my way, not, could give us a couple more points for importance and safety and things of that nature. So, but they have scoring zero to 10 for various criteria. It's kind of for the committee, do they feel that's a high enough 10 or a two out of 10? But I would might ask to convince them that it's a 12 out of 10.
And, and or we need it done starting like in June and finish by August. Yeah. Kind of with this. Thank you very much. Item, any other thing? With that said, there's nobody against that up here, and we will put that on the agenda. Next one. Item B here. Item B is, it looks like we want to submit an application about public work permission for grant and or loan for the select projects consideration. Rob, what do you, please say.
I just said the exact same program, it's 10th Street. 10th Street, I wasn't asking for any loan money, but we'll be working with Johnson Controls on preliminary set of plans between now and, and the 13th. And look and submit that, once we have their cost estimate, we can look at kind of a grant loan combination. Some, you score better with the loan, but then again, if we have enough cash, of course, Laura will be part of that, so you, you would need to take a loan. But OKWC loans are 100% loan holders.
C loans.
Yeah. And you see, it just brings down to a
I like C loans.
So we haven't figured out the exact cost, because they're working on the claims as we speak, but that's something in order to get this legislation to have a pass cut through the evening, so I want to discuss it tonight, but I don't have a lot of technical stuff.
Okay, so any discussion on that? Any way against that? If that, if you didn't look at, we'll put this on the agenda. That concludes our call.
I just wanted to say for those that were in the audience, if they didn't understand why there were monitors here and not monitors there, the monitors reflect what's on the street behind the tayis in front, so that they wouldn't have to turn around to view the streets.
It's a nice vision. Nice job.
We can all find a lot of work in it, I know the structure, and it looks like we could mobilize this if we wanted to go build a park someday or something like that, but no.
Could I ask, I want to ask one quick question, which is not part of this. Rob, about the intersection of Apple Grove and Cleveland Avenue, that bad intersection, I know we're in a public domain, Apple Grove, but how soon is that going to start? There's a lot of questions.
Yeah, absolutely. Right before we went on break, we actually had Apple Grove paving a joint project with Stark County out for a bit. That was from just, just a little bit west of North Main intersection, all the way to Markville. If you haven't heard, we only had one contractor bid the project. The other two local paving companies each called me in the morning, they were submitting, telling me they wouldn't be submitting bids, they were just behind schedule and too busy. But, you know, they, I mean, North Stark is right on, literally they're on Apple Grove on the east side of Highway. But we're just too busy, everybody was so far behind. So one bid we had was unordered, it was three times our asking, I guess. So we're going to go ahead and rebid that project, and, and that will take care of the middle of the intersection. But we'll rebid it, and then that will be done in the spring, as soon as the plants back open. But what we've done in the meantime is to hold that intersection and then joint up on North Main Street through Acme up to Wilbur. We just ordered a purchase order to a local paving company, $35,550, to put a, a patch on that, just grind out an inch and a half and smooth that up. I mean, it's not going to hold for the winter time. We've just got to get that thing taken care of, it will hard with the freeze and thaw cycles. So the intersection will get done in eight or 10 months, but we'll still have to do the patch because of what last winter. And then the North Main Street portion up through Wilbur, we have a grant in two years, almost $800,000, $860,000, to redo all of North Main from South to Orient. So this 14-foot wide patch over that bad joint will hold us for two years.
Thank you.
Maybe somehow we can get that into a lot, a lot of folks really, you know, they see this, they don't understand that when the contractors are busier, the bids are much higher. And if it's three times higher, we sure can't handle that. So if we can rebid it when it's, they're starting to get their work together in the spring, bids are usually lower. So we need to let them understand that, because they're going to say, why aren't we getting this done? So maybe on Facebook, we can kind of put that out there. And the other kind of method to my madness is, is, you know, we've got some major dollar amount grants to take care of these major roads, you know, Everheartly did last year, South Mainly did last year, you know, Portage was a disaster, but we're doing it next year. You know, mostly covered by grants. So if we can, you know, delay a year, hold it together with Band-Aids, and get the public to accept that, that gives us the money to then go into the neighborhoods and pave all these neighborhood streets that are very difficult to get grants for. So if we could kind of get them to maybe understand better and buy into the fact that, yes, we absolutely know that North Main and Apple Grove is a mess, but there's a reason it's a mess. We're trying to not take it together, so we can take 800 grand along the neighborhood.
So, so it's on the public record now, we're doing the intersection, hold us over till we can rebid it, save more money, because we got that bid that's 250,000 more than we were hoping for because we're too busy. So when they rebid it next year, you know, this would be more competitive, we save more money. If we save another 300, then we have more streets we can do in the neighborhoods. So I just want to get that out to, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. That concludes our agenda. Any votes, new chairs? So, all in favor? I oppose. Vote for the chair, Mayor.
[inaudible]
People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public. People aren't going to join us. I'm like, why are you doing this? They get the public.